We will begin with open session. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, moment of silence, public service announcements, continued public hearing with National Grid on JO board polls, excuse me, for 6:35 PM. Department head report, water and sewer, DPW, fire, then write into the town administrator update in a biweekly memo, then consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract with JJS, Universal Construction Company, for $17,773 for the 60 Cedar Street Pavilion and bathhouse roof replacement. Then consideration and possible action on DPW surplus vehicle auctioned or disposed as requested, possible acceptance of a donation from Lenny Petrillo of Hearthstone Market of 100 place settings and silverware worth approximately $4,000 to the senior center. Consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the agreement with Sieska Hennessy for elevator consulting engineering services for Joshua High Public Library. Consideration and possible action on the updated job description for fire captain. We are tabling consideration of a similar position for the police department. Consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract for design services related to sidewalks along the Sturridge Rec area on Cedar Street through ARPA. Consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the engineering services contract with VHB for the design of access to Streeter Beach. Consideration and possible action on the approval of a grade one assignment and amended job description of the food service coordinator. Consideration and possible action on the approval of a new position of kitchen and program support staff funded through an annual formula grant for the senior center. Consideration and possible action on the approval of the revised job description for the conservation agent, assistant conservation agent, approval of the revised job description for the town clerk. Consideration and possible action on the selection of a select board member for the housing trust committee. Consideration and possible action on establishment and reorganization of part-time and call firefighters. Consideration and possible action authorized the chair to execute the contract with VHB for Cedar Street pedestrian improvement project funded through complete street grant. Old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then executive session to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation and the potential purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. If it has an open meeting, may have a detrimental on the negotiation or litigating position of the chair of the board and the chair so declares, and then adjournment. So with that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is all correct.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Again, I'd like to take a moment of silence just to think about, you know, still people recovering from the storms in the southeast and the strife abroad, so please just take a moment to think about those folks struggling. Thank you. Additionally, so election day is tomorrow, November 5th, 2024, from 6:30 AM to 8:00 PM. The location is at the Sturridge Host Hotel Ballroom. It is not at Town Hall. Please come prepared and know your vote on the ballot questions. Red books will be available for those who need them. With that, any public service announcements? Mary?
I have none.
Mr. Chase?
I have none, thank you.
All right. All right, now we at 6:35, that's behind. So I'm, Chase, would you please call the public hearing?
You got it. National Grid has made a petition to the Sturridge Board of Selectmen to install four JO polls on Podunk Road, beginning at a point approximately 1,500 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Podunk Road and Highway 49, and continuing approximately 5,100 feet in a north direction, installation of new polls, 2250, 40 through 25, 44, and 44 through 50. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires, and the above are intersecting public ways. The poll hearing will take place on Monday, September 2.
Great. All right. The community from National Grid.
And I do have updates if the board would like, just to give you an update where these, this project is at, through Jean and Lauren's departments, through planning and conservation.
Okay.
So Jean has indicated that Brandy from National Grid, Brandy does the forestry work. Brandy did say that they would be filing soon. They have not filed with Jean yet. The materials they have sent, which you all have here, appear to be pretty complete. Jean is indicating that once they file, then they will advertise, tag trees, notify a butters, and all information will be posted on the website. That will likely be sometime in December, could possibly run into January depending on advertising requirements. Lauren has indicated that there were some orders of conditions on some of the initial portions of the project regarding a debris pile along the road portion, the not-so-abandoned road. There has been an appeal with DEP of those orders of conditions, and there is a site visit November 13th with DEP, and she's unsure how long the process will take. So there is a little bit of a discussion going on, an appeal on the order of conditions, so that's not moving immediately. There still has to be another site visit, I guess, on the 13th to discuss those.
Okay. Any question about that from the board?
No.
All right. So we've had quite a few of these hearings, guys, so who am I talking to?
Hi, I'm Jeremy Sherman, I'm the project manager.
Okay.
Alexander Muts, I'm the designer.
All right.
TCU engineer from National Grid.
Hi, I'm Buba, I'm the, Buba Jeremy, I'm the community manager for Sturridge. I just want to thank you for having us today.
Ah, thank you. You're welcome. So we've had a lot of conversations about this project, and I know we have PowerPoints that might be the most logical place to start. Does that work?
Yeah, we also have a map. The PowerPoint is more from forestry perspective.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can give you sort of some high-level sort of picture of the project in general, if you'd like.
Yeah, no, thank you, please.
All right, so, you know, for us, you know, the customer, when we say the word the customer, would be Nextera. Nextera is building a solar facility, a five-megawatt solar facility in Charlton. You know, it's five megawatts, which is about 150 homes per megawatt. Most of the line work is in Sturridge, though. Out of approximately 646 people on the circuit, only 23 of them are in Charlton, so it's right on the border. So we, you know, I presented this at the Concom, and they said, hey, like, you're doing a lot of work in our town, sort of what's, is there benefits for our town, right? Your town, excuse me. So it will provide renewable energy to 623 premises, and then we, you know, are doing upgrades, and that's what these poll petitions are for, to the distribution lines. We're estimating at about $2 million of upgrades, so you have, you know, more robust, more modern distribution line. So that's how we see it as a benefit, hopefully you see it as a benefit as well. We are replacing 84 replacement poles on, replacing 84 poles on Podunk Road and 17 new installs. We're going to have 2.75 miles of what we call Hendrix Cable, and that's kind of the stuff that, if you've ever seen distribution line that's more in a star form, it's stronger. Alex, more or less, you can give the engineering behind it.
Yeah, so the idea with the Hendrix Cable down Podunk Road is because it's so heavily tree down Podunk Road, the idea is you'll have one tension messenger cable that runs on the top of that diamond that Jeremy was talking about. That messenger cable's tension runs on top of all the energized lines, and the idea is that with, you keep all the cables in a tighter formation, and you have a messenger cable on the top. If any tree or anything were to fall on top of that tension line, it would hit a non-energized line, and that line's meant to support a tree branch or anything on top of the line and keep it from taking the poles down and causing a hazard.
The other part is, I think, also, you use less footprint.
Yeah, you cut down your actual, like, clearances that you need for your trees, because you bundle your cables up and you put them farther away from the tree line than if you were to run them in the standard cross-arm configuration.
And, you know, just from the site visits I've had, a lot of the poles here are 25-plus years old, some are older, and, you know, there hasn't been any storms recently. That's good. But, you know, a tree will probably, will usually take down a fair amount of old poles just because they'll snap. So it is good to have this new infrastructure. We're also adding an automated sectionalizing switches. This will reduce the total number of people that experience outage. When I say outage, I mean when the, when the, when the lines go down and everyone loses power. New switch at pole 79 and a half on Charlton Road will help keep 241 people energized during a temporary fault and 83 people energized during a downstream outage. The new switch at pole 42 on Podunk Road helps keep 75 people energized during a temporary fault and 224 people energized during a downstream outage. So we're looking to, as part of this project, upgrade the distribution lines in Sturridge. That brings us to the poll petitions and why we're here today. Z, if you want to talk about those poll petitions.
No, I think they covered everything essentially, and just on top of that, for the, the reason for the new pole installs is because, excuse me, the current span between the poles, I've mentioned this before, is, it's mentioned here, it's over our limit of 150 feet, which means, again, more susceptibility to snapping and breaking in the future. So the point of the new pole installs would actually be to avoid pole damage in the future.
All right. Well, first of all, questions from the board?
Well, I, well, but I, maybe at the end of the presentation, it's probably better.
Yeah, if you'd like, do you have the map? The map is geared more towards the December 4th.
Are we going to stop?
Yeah, keep, is the map, or is this, this more or less, it's just the trees will?
Right.
Is the map a separate attachment, or is it all?
I think it's...
Yeah.
Keep going?
Yeah. Keep going. Keep going, please. And you can see it's a fair amount of work, and there, the map I'm looking for is the...
Yeah, I'm trying to see if that's the one, she's open. Do you have your, on your computer, do you see the page?
Yes.
Give me a look. Is this anything?
Let me see if we can get you the whole stick.
Yeah, all the, all the petitions, this is like covering the northern section of the project. The petitions that we have today are going south up Podunk Road, and they're all, they're pretty much all on Podunk Road up to the intersection of Podunk and Lad Road.
Yeah, I think it's a different, did you, which might be a different document. Yeah, I think it's a different attachment. It's a stick. This right here is the data that went into the map.
You have them all under one?
I put them all under one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So the map would be maybe 20 pages, 14 pages in a...
That's probably one of the last ones.
This is, yeah, this is the data that went into the map.
Yeah.
Hi, Mary.
So what we did here is to put everything on one map, where basically the planning board, the scenic route, and Concom, so everything is here listed, but also on the maps. So there's a very complex map that is, that labels, public, private, choice, that we're talking about, and it's all color-coded, so it was just a heavy document, so I'm not sure how you manage it. But we'll, we'll focus more on the Podunk areas. Do you know the exact street?
Um, yeah, so I'm trying to look.
This is it?
Yeah, this is the one.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right, so this right here, you know, is, is, so, you know, the attachments you pulled up earlier was not a waste at all. That's what made this map, so that's the data. So you can see that we take the trees as requested by the town, and the, and the trees are plotted on this map, if you wanted to scroll down.
Hold on one second. So what are the, so the gridded colored lines to the bottom right corner, what are each of those lines representing?
Those right there would be, we don't have an environmental lead here today, but we did present this to the Concom, but just slightly different because it didn't have all the trees on it yet. That right there is showing areas that, that would get wet.
So this is your wetland zone or something?
Yes. It's a wetland zone, areas of disturbance. Yes.
Okay.
But I'm not, like, the Concom was interested in the area of the Podunk accessway only, after looking at this map.
So are the purple lines more wet than the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, when you get to where across is 49, you'll see...
There's never legend on it.
Yeah.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay.
And this is sort of at the tail end of where, you can see those, those red dots.
The red dots are the trees?
I can't really, I visionate.
Well, there's a lot of different dots.
Oh, wait, yeah, you want to go, there, there poll replacements?
The red are private, the blue are...
I think all the circles, the solid circles of the trees and the circles with the, with the smaller circle in the center are the polls. So like, you see, the first poll, 1650, like, that's an existing poll, and it's got four trees being removed directly.
Exactly, right. Yep.
But the tree removal by owner, all those trees are color-coded as well, right? Red is condition, alive, owner, private. Yellow...
You'll see those, the red circles themselves are existing structures.
Wait, so the red owners, wait, the red circles are...
There you go.
Condition alive, owner, private, is what it says.
You can see the ones, yes, you're right.
So all the red ones are private trees?
Yes.
Okay, so there are a significant amount of private trees.
Yeah, I knew you wanted to look at the, the map, yes, the newer legend.
And that's what planning is requiring, that all of these trees are coded. Owner, private, alive, owner, private, dead, town, private, alive, town, private, dead.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt the presentation.
No, no, you're spot on, though.
This is, like, long-awaited, because we've had a lot of residents with a lot of questions, and we, I'll speak for myself, have not been in a position to be knowledgeable enough to answer the questions, which has really frustrated them. So thank you for this, and I think they're going to want to see it on the website. I really wasn't even aware, when these poll hearings were taking place, that some of these trees are private trees on private property. That distinction, to the best of my knowledge, was not really made when, you know, the various, your various colleagues have come forward.
Yeah.
So it's very useful to have this information now, and I, I'm happy to have it, I feel it's long overdue.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Mary. But, so let's, just from a meeting perspective, let's just keep running through the data set, and then we'll get to comment. All right, you want to scroll down, Michelle, unless there's anything else on this?
Yeah, you'll just see, you know, you'll just see as we head down.
Yeah, as you head down, the yellow polls, like, that one right there, 2250, that's one that's being petitioned. So all the yellow structures are new exist, ones that we're proposing. All the other polls on this project that you see that might, if you see, like, more than four yellow circles on this one, it's because they've been passed, or they've been presented at a previous poll petition hearing.
But those were all presented and passed pending...
Yes.
...conservation, so even the ones that have gone through are still pending, all that other stuff going on across the street.
But some of it has been appealed.
Yeah, let's, let's just stay on the data, guys. All right, so this, anybody have any questions specifically about this slide before we move off of it? No? Okay. So let's keep sliding down. All right, so what's the green dot? Okay, so the green dots are condition alive, that's estate because it's Well State Park.
Yes.
So where are the polls on this page again? I'm getting a little confused.
The green dots?
Alls are the trees, sorry.
Are the trees?
Well, the green dots are trees, right?
Yep, so the white circles are...
The polls are gray.
With the numbers.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And the white circle poll means we're replacing it, so we, I imagine, we already have the easement for it, because the poll's been there.
So just so we're clear, so if I'm looking at, say, 24-50, the white dotted circle is a poll.
Yes.
The four or five red circles around it are trees that you anticipate are asking for permission to remove. Fair?
You are correct.
And then the green circles are state-owned land, and so most of that goes through that because that's Well State Park, and then you break through to the plot that's 113 Podunk, which, that is where the heavy lines are, right? That's an electrical way?
Yeah, that's showing in that one that we are proposing to remove pole 31 and go underground underneath the transmission lines.
Okay. So you're going, is that what the dotted yellow line is?
Dotted line from pole 30 to pole 31-50, those are, that's going to be an underground line going under the transmission lines.
Got you. What about the dotted red, is that just, doesn't mean...
That's a remove, that's a removal of the existing line that's currently going underneath the transmission line. So right now, as it's existing, there is a line that's overhead, that runs underneath the overhead lines, and we're just going to put that underground.
Okay.
Is there a key, I'm sorry, is there a key for what are...
Yeah, it should be on the bottom. It's the, the large legend on the bottom.
Oh, okay, was it drawn before?
There's just a lot of, there's a lot in there, we need a new legend.
Oh, gosh.
It might be a little easier, it's right behind you if you turn around.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
Okay. So, and then we have the wetland zones to the upper right hand that we discussed before. Any other questions specifically about this image? All right, can we move it down, Michelle? All right, is this... Any questions about this image?
Well, can you explain? No, is that all, is wetland again, the purple?
Yeah, that's a wetland, but that's, that's removed from the area we're mostly working in, but there is a wetland back there behind those homes. You can see the, the red trees, those are the condition alive, owner, private. And then you'll see, I believe there's only, is that blue over there? A lot of white poles, which are existing, yep, replacing, so those old poles will come out, and the brand-new poles will go in there.
So on this particular slide, more than half is, are wetlands that are depicted, correct?
These wetlands are, were not of a concern to the Concom.
No, I'm not saying it's of concern, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the slide.
Yeah, like, so behind...
Where it's pink, and green, and yellow, and purple, those are all delineations of wetland area.
Yes, yes.
It was appointed that specifically in the legend on the bottom.
Yes, you're correct.
Because on the other side, it looked like it was only in one little section, but this slide is like looking at it from a different angle, I guess.
Is the, is the rest of the road, I think?
Yeah, so each one of these slides is going, there's no overlap, so each one is, is a different section of the road.
Yeah, so if you're going to 49 and driving, would, would...
I think it's, it's starting at the south of 49 and moving your way north.
Yes.
As if you're driving a Clem's. All right. So, and this is, the only new icon I'm seeing on this is blue circles that mean trees that are alive, and that are the towns?
Yeah, I believe the next poll petition is on the next page.
Okay, let's just keep moving then, because, unless there's comments. Okay.
Yeah, so this one has the last of, this should have all the rest of the polls being petitioned today.
Okay. Zoom tight.
So just polls 40-25, pole 44, and pole 44-50.
Okay. So let's get back to that more specific. So, so the polls today, installation of 2250, 40-25, 44, and 44 to 50. And 44 to 50, meaning, yeah, that's a, that's a designation, not numbers 44 through 50.
Yeah, it's, like, you can think of it like pole 44 and a half.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
And this one, the only different thing to point out is pole 44 is keeping its poll number, but we are removing the old 44, and we're actually shifting it 60 feet down the road, and that's just for our spanning requirements, so it's keeping...
It's a light in the sight of the house, too.
Yeah, so we keep, it does, I think, the idea was to put it right on the property line there to keep it out of the person's front yard.
Okay, and I think this, is there any other images that we should be looking at tonight? I don't think so.
I don't believe so. Mary, I will resend them to you. Your email got kicked back with all of these, and I just don't know if it was the size of the file that I sent. I sent everybody a copy of this in email.
You're going to put this online?
Oh, we'll put this online as well, okay. Yeah.
I mean, we all asked her not to send it to you.
What's happening? Yeah, I didn't want to print them all out, so...
All right, so, all right, so this is, again, just a more south-facing view of this on the other side of...
We're just a little bit north of the section.
Oh, okay.
So I think as the, as you scroll down, you'll just creep up the road north.
Yeah, yeah, 450, I got you, okay.
So these, the next ones on here, 4750, have, that was in a previous poll petition.
No, I see, I see. All right. Any questions on this? All right, you want to keep going? Okay. Okay. So we're past the polls we're asking for a vote on tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we can keep going through it, but at least in terms of these polls, I don't know that there's any more information in these slides. Although I do think, and, Michelle, slide down a little bit. Yeah, so you also note in the, in, on the bottom left corner of the index map, is that basically showing the directions of the screenshots?
Yeah, you'll see, if you go to the next one, you'll see that it's just a little lower.
Got you. Okay, so slowly going up.
What do you mean by that?
So you see the bottom?
Just tracking through the project.
Just track, so if you, the last, like a paper, so if he slides down again, then there.
Oh, okay, got it.
Following the, following the path of the maps.
Okay. All right, so with that, to the board, unless we, does the board want to see any more of it because we've gone past the polls that are actually on hearing tonight?
Can I just ask a couple of questions on their intro? Because I was trying to take notes.
In a second, but do we have any questions on just, I went, getting past images?
No.
No, and so I think we're all set with the images. Before we get into board comment, anybody, this is a public hearing, does anybody in the crowd have any questions just about the images? Assuming not, because it's mostly Sturridge employees, but...
Unless Shane wants to say something. Here's a different thing.
Okay, so, all right, Mary, you, I think you said...
Are we back on the slide with the polls that we're possibly approving tonight? Is that, which one is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can keep going.
Just leaving on that.
There you go.
All right, and I just had, just in your intro, okay, 84 polls total are being replaced, and 17 new ones are being installed, largely because you want to decrease the gap in between them to hold the heavier cables, correct? Okay. And 2.7 miles of cable?
Is that about right?
Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's about right. That's like, that's going from the solar site in Charlton all the way through Sturridge.
But the lines are predominantly in Sturridge according to the...
Yes.
All right, and how many, if you have this calculation, I apologize if it was sent to us, how many trees total, you have the amount of polls, and I know this is a separate hearing, but I'm still curious, because people ask, how many trees, private and town-owned, are slated to come down in order to achieve this upgrade?
I wish we had, I can...
It would be in that tree size, right?
Yeah.
Do you have to go and count them?
No, Brandy has that number, Brandy's not here. Our forestry...
The bulk of them are in...
So high level, we know it's, you know, we're talking about, I think it's 400 perhaps for the town.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Between 400 and 600, so there's about, I think, 100 or so that might be private.
The majority of them are...
I need to check the exact numbers, yeah.
Yeah, we can get you the exact number.
Did you say 400?
In total, it's about...
Jean may know the answer to that, if she would.
Oh, this is, keep the meeting going, okay?
Because, I mean, at least on these slides, the vast, there's very few blue dots.
You go down...
The vast majority are red.
Yes.
And so, can you get me that?
Yes, definitely.
We'll get you that, yeah. I'll get you the exact breakdown.
Tomorrow, yeah. Yeah, Brandy, our, Brandy, who's, will be there on the 4th, could not make it tonight, but she did all the tree surveys. she did all the tree surveys.
Okay, that's useful, because again, residents are less interested in the fact that 17 new poles are going in, and they are more interested for the residents.
It's all, it's all new poles.
Right, new installations, excuse me.
Yes.
I guess they're, they're less into, some residents are less interested in knowing how many new poles are going in. I know they're all new, I guess new installations, but they are very interested in terms of their appreciation of their houses, how many trees are coming down. That's, that's really what they want to know.
If you scroll down to where the Podunk accessway is, that's the bulk of the trees, and those are anything, I think, over two inches, and Sturbridge counts as a tree. So there are a lot of like really small, it's two or three inches, really, which is, you know, just how you guys count them. So there's a lot of small, like second-growth stuff. Keep scrolling.
Next one?
Yeah, keep going down, and you'll see that's, there used to be a road there before Route 49 was built. I want to say 49 was built in like '72 or '75. Keep going, please.
That's the road that we have the maintenance agreement as well on with the owner of the project.
Keep going, please. I'll tell you where.
They all see Route 49.
There, see? So if you turn around, you'll see that there's the bulk of the trees on the, on the screen behind you.
Little blue dots on that one there?
So if, that is, that makes up a lot of, of that 400 estimate.
Okay, so 400 to 600 trees are getting removed, ballpark. You're going to give us a specific number, and most of those occurring on the old Podunk or the old state highway or whatever was there before?
Yes.
That's in access?
Yeah, I think it was originally Podunk Road going all the way through.
Yeah, broke through there. Okay. So, okay, so then, and?
On, on the DOT property, right? It's a giant easement they have.
Well, some is DOT, some of it's ours, it looks like. And so, okay. All right, Mary, any other questions?
No, good, thank you.
We'll get to that tomorrow.
I just want to say for, we, we try to be as thorough as possible and work with the team, with the town, the, the town board and everyone, so one thing we want to do is to touch any tree without an agreement, like without agreeing with the, with the private, private owners. So if there's any tree we need to work on, we'll have to agree with them first before we touch the tree. So I understand there have been some markings without kind of them being aware or agreeing to it, which we apologize for, but we'll make sure that we know as a policy, we won't cut any tree or trim any tree before agreeing with the owner themselves, so.
Okay, that's very helpful, and I don't want to get off the subject tonight. But I, I was notified that trees, and I won't, were marked on private property without permission. And I understand, apparently it went door-to-door, nobody went to their door. And so, you know, you've got to watch that because they come to us, and to be perfectly honest, if that happened to me, I would be extremely upset as well.
Totally appreciate that, yeah. I think that's, that's something we'll work on.
You know, it hap, your, the procedure you just explained hasn't been consistently followed through.
Yeah, we'll make sure, we'll make sure going forward. We, there was a lot of shifting, I guess even personnel, including myself and I have some of the field trees that, you know, that were not on-site, so we'll make sure there's better oversight, even in terms of the communication. So the processes that usually will come and, you know, knock on the door, talk to you, and explain what's happening before we do anything. If you are not there, we'll leave a liftlet, and then we'll leave, like give you a chance to call us back or something. So we'll make sure that that's consistently followed.
And I will tell you, if you hear of anything or any issue concerning that process, have whoever, or you let me know, because Booba responds to me immediately if I send him something. He's very responsive, so if someone, for some reason that protocol breaks down, please keep that communication line open.
Yeah, we'll take over.
Okay. All right, so anything else from the board right now? Anything from the community? It's a public hearing. Okay. Yeah, I think I would just second what Mary said, or I said, and I think we've said in a lot of these meetings. I also would say that the, the, you know, again, we, I didn't go out and investigate this, so I don't know it firsthand, but you know, you're taking down a hardwood in someone's yard, please make sure that there's, by an understanding, precise thing, you know, nobody cares probably about a three-foot pine. But, I mean, a little dramatic, but like, but there is a, and please instill it to it because yet, yes, it is all great to have all this communication and all this fall-through, but once a tree's gone, a tree's gone. And most people are not getting it back in their life. So it is a huge quality-of-life issue, especially on this road, which just has some gorgeous trees, so we appreciate it. With that, do any other comments from the board?
More questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you, Jean, and I echo our chair's sentiments. Can you tell me where in town I might see a new pole that's going to be similar to the poles going on Podunk? Because I know, I forgot what representative was here, they're going to be taller, from my understanding, than the poles that I'm probably thinking of, like on my road.
Yeah.
And where in town do they have poles?
So you want to see, you want to see one of them visually?
Yes, because I'm also wondering, you know, this is a residential area, and I've also had questions about that. You know, I've explained, well, it's upgrade, you're going to have less outages, and they're like, how big are these poles? Like, I, I think, is it going to look like a commercial area, like an industrial area?
So I'd, I'd say a good, a good reference point that you could use for this, if anyone has a question on, I can't say for the exact size right now because I'm just looking at an area I know of, but Charlton Road, and like a long Charlton Road leading up to the bottom of Route 49 has the same sort of spacer construction that will be used for Podunk Road.
The same size poles and lines?
More or less, yes. More or less the same size. There might be a few that are larger because it's a more busy area, but just looking at it just quickly, it's, it's generally, should be the same construction there.
Okay, and are there any residential roads that you can point to that will have these kind of poles and lines? Because that's not a real residential area.
Yeah. I'd say off the top of my head, I don't know of any.
I would like to.
I don't think we've upgraded anything recently like that.
I know, but, you know, again.
Get you some pictures, and then also let you know, like, the location more or less. I'm hoping there's one in town, I'm not sure, but we'll try to find something nearby at least.
We, a lot of the newer, the newer ones will be built in this. Yeah, we could just, you know, the older, the ones you have, are existing have, you know, crossarms or pins, which are weaker, so most of the new poles will be built with Hendricks.
But here's the thing, I guess I don't totally understand, because if you replace it, you said the newer poles are going to be larger, these bigger poles, these taller poles.
Yes.
But how do you only replace some tall poles in a neighborhood and others are short? Wouldn't they all have to be?
Yeah, all those, every.
I'm not talking about whole, no, you said moving forward, like, I'm trying to envision another neighborhood.
So if, if there's a storm and your pole comes down, we don't put up brand-new Hendricks, we just replace it, right? So we're usually fixing them one, two at a time.
So I could explain that.
So if it's a brand-new, like, line?
I, I guess my question's a little, oh, yeah, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, definitely. So essentially, it would make sense for everything to be consistent throughout. Unfortunately, with Massachusetts, there's, there's hills where there's bad digging, sometimes we need to deep-set poles. Sometimes when it's really bad snowstorms, we have help from like Florida, they do things a different way, you know? They put in poles where they think it's right. So it's not every single pole, unfortunately, it's not really 100% up to our standards, and it's not going to be 100% consistent, 100% consistent throughout Massachusetts, just depending on the area and what, what needs to be done over there.
Yeah, but are you going to have tall poles mixed with, not in this neighborhood now? I'm, I'm just trying to get a picture of what these.
Normally don't.
Are you going to have tall poles mixed with smaller poles?
On this neighborhood or in general?
In general.
So let's, so let's, see if I understand it. So generally speaking, when you replace batches of poles you're using, the poles you're using in this, which are taller and do not have crossframes, when you are replacing a pole that's in a line, you just replace it more or less in the same manner that comes.
Yes.
And then, and then one additional point is when there's emergency services and people come in to deal with huge ice storms or the like, you might get some deviation within that. But within it, there's some level of, of consistency.
I do think, just quick clarification here, so National Grid will have anything that has a three-phase line going to it, so if you look at the pole, anything with three lines on the top, that will try to construct everything with the same-size poles regardless of what kind of wire we're putting, so whether it's crossarm or spacer cable, those poles are going to be the same size for the most part.
And when you say three-phase, you mean within a zone?
Yeah, like, so if you like look at a pole and you see like it's a main line, so it's on the main road, it's going to have three lines going on top of it. So those poles will be the same size, and then if you have like a smaller road that branches off and it might only have one of those lines going to it, those poles will be slightly shorter than those, but they'll all be the same size down that.
Yeah, so you're talking about primary or secondary?
Yeah.
Got you. And if you see like a little can in there, it's a transformer, so I'll step the.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I mean, I just, I, is this going to dramatically, given that you're going to replace all of the poles with larger poles to accommodate the heavier wires for you to tie into your customer, is this going to fundamentally change the aesthetic look of Podunk Road and make it look much less residential than it currently looks? I guess, I guess that's my, that's my question.
Yeah, we use, we use these poles, we use these for residential.
Okay, and that's why I asked about 15 minutes ago, is there a neighborhood that I can go and?
Well, fine, I just don't know this town so well, so I couldn't tell you.
We'll get you, I'll get you some pictures, I'll get you some locations.
I see it all the time, when I'm driving, like, you know, I'm like, oh, you know, these are newer poles with Hendricks.
We'll get you a few in the area, and you can, yeah, survey that, definitely. And I understand, I sexy question, and I think the designer take that into account for the area, so we don't want to, you know, we don't want to make anything uglier for, for most people, but we just want to make sure also, you know, the lines are secure, so that's, that's usually what we focus on, but we do take the, the looks into consideration, so. If there's, it will be as consistent as possible, you know, like you said, some areas might need more, they might have more elevation or not, but for the most part, they should be, they should be even, and they should be on the same height.
Okay. So in this particular instance, we're talking about polls 2250, 40-20, 44, and 40-50. Do we have any more comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Close the poll, public here.
Oh, it's been a long question.
Take motion to close the public here.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, do we have a motion on the substance?
I'll make a motion to approve the installation of new poles 22-50, 40-25, 44-50.
Second.
All those in favor?
Any discussion, I just have a question.
Oh, sure.
So there aren't any houses affected by these four? I mean, because usually we have people, did we get the cards back?
Have all the green cards back? Yeah, we've got everything.
Okay, and how many green cards were there? Roughly, Michelle, I don't need an exact. I just want to know how many.
It's enough to need a clip.
How many? Just for these, just for these four new poles? How many came back?
I was just, I'm saying, I was just.
I don't know many, but there's.
There's more, I'll say for the record, yeah, there's more than a dozen for the record.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still in discussion. Any other comments, questions? All right, do we have, all those in favor? All those against? Thank you, gentlemen.
If I could, January 12th, Booba, I think is the date? Or should we? For the informational subject to?
January 14, I think.
14, okay, so I will. Hold on. In the past, all of our motions have been subject to the approval of? I would add that is. So I'm going to make a motion that we open up our vote, how do you do that? So make it subject to the reconsider, motion to reconsider. I make, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider our vote, add a condition.
And then, what condition?
That it's going to be subject to the approval of the ConCon and Planning Board.
Okay, I will second that motion. All those in favor?
And Michelle has let National Grid know that in the future, we really want to change the order of the process, that before they even come to you, it goes there, we may get notification that it's going to go there, and I think we should set up a plan that you're notified that poles are going over there, but there's really no point in you looking at them until it could even happen.
Well, that's what we discussed in our last meeting, that we preferred it.
It's 7:15, I'm not going to hold these gentlemen here, but, but the point of it is, if we'd have this in June or July, it would have saved a lot of everybody's time, and if it comes to the people that, that were predicate on our approval first, then a lot of these questions get answered, and we get, and then, and then the community comes to a meeting like this and gets the answers they're looking for, and everybody's life is easier. Because it's not like we're, you know, and then the details get worked out.
And these four guys are covering that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, these two are troublemakers.
They become a regular.
But it is, but it is just like from an operational perspective, and we understand we cover a lot of ground, and, and we're not trying to be difficult, it's just, we just reorganize this a little bit, it'll go a lot smoother for everybody, okay?
And a reminder, National Grid's holding an informational session.
On January 14.
Yep.
What time?
It's from 3:00 to 6:00, 3:00 PM to 6:00.
Open, open house for the public, so I'll update everybody as it goes.
Because again, you know, people work, and some of these site visits have been during the day.
This is a general.
No, I know, but, I mean, even 3:00, in order to attend that, you either need to be retired, or you need to be in a position to take a vacation day. I really wish that it would have been on a Saturday, or 5:00 to 8:00, or nighttime. I've got, I've got to be honest, because.
We'll definitely.
We've work at 3:00.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
An informational meeting.
Well, I think, and it's a fair point, Mary, but on that note, I'm going to let these guys leave work now.
Yeah. So you're going to tell me some neighborhoods, right?
Yeah, we'll tell you some neighborhood, and then we'll.
And that's tomorrow.
Heather just indicated Eastbound Hill and Collin Road in Drillfield. Okay.
Great. All right, we are moving on. Shane, you are up, my friend, Water and Sewer Department Head report.
Thank you, Booba. Perfect, thank you, appreciate it.
Great. You're not cutting any trees, are you, Shane?
No, ma'am. Not today.
Shane's not authorized to cut any.
I'm not cutting any.
All right, sir, you may begin.
You have my operation reports for August and September. I'll start with any questions on those.
I didn't have any. Board have any questions for Shane?
I have not either.
How are the plants doing with the drought?
Well, there's not a lot of flow coming into the plant, which makes it hotter tree Well, there's not a lot of flow coming into the plant, which makes it hotter tree, because everything's more condensed, also leads to odors, but we haven't had any other complaints, and we check the wells daily, we still have plenty of room before we have any major problems, but we could definitely use the rain.
The guys in the back are agreeing on that, too, that's more a question for them right now.
All right, so, so this is the August 2024 and September reports, so I don't have any questions on the August, anything, moving to the September, Shane, anything high level?
No, business as usual, you'll see, I just want to make sure, because I don't want, in the report, you'll see that we're not allowed to work E1 panels anymore, we should never been in them to begin with, mask code, there's electrician has to come in now, so anytime we have to change an E1 pump, we go on a call, when we had a blockage a couple weeks ago, we have to bring in a licensed electrician now, so you just be aware of that, because that's going to, you know, bring up the cost, we have to change those out, so I put a whole memo in the September report for you. Moving on, we did another round of lead and copper testing, everything came back fine, there is going to be a public notification that's going to have to go out to, I believe it's around 1,100 customers, Heather's going to discuss that more with you when she gets up here, because it's going to get some people's attention. It's not bad, it's just, it's stuff that's mandated by DEP and EPA that we have to put out, so she'll go over that with you. PPH testing, we did two more rounds in the water, the water system continues to come up negative, we also did lithium testing, which is required on the UCMR5, and that came back negative. We also did more testing on the wastewater plant, that's not coming up negative, that's coming up with some substantial hits, we'll continue to sample and report to DEP and EPA as required, and that's all that's required right now.
Substantial hits of what?
Of PPH, so we're not seeing in the drinking water, which is a great thing, but we are seeing at the wastewater plant.
And do we think that the, do we have any causal understanding of it at all, or is it...
So, we started testing some of the facilities, I don't hold much, I don't hold too much with one data point, right, we're going to need a few, we also looked at the landfill leachate, that had some hits, too, but until you have a couple of years' worth of data, it's going to be tough to point the finger anywhere, but it's definitely not coming from the drinking water, that I can tell you.
Yeah, okay.
All right. We did another round of hydrant flushing, that's completed, we winterized all the hydrants, so that stuff's done for the winter, we did have a, every three years, DEP comes in, goes through the facilities at the water plant, the water tanks, so we had that about a month ago, and I'm just waiting on their report, once I have that, I'll share the findings with you, I can tell you the water tanks have their attention, especially Stallion Hill, but that's no surprise, and I think the other tanks, they're going to require some work on that, hopefully, we get the reports, and I'll report back to you on that. Intern program's been going on for a little over a month with a kid from Tantascua, seems to be working out really well, I met with his teacher before the program started, and I guess it's got the interest for a lot of kids up there, so hopefully, this will be a continuing thing every year, we'll bring a new student in and get them in the field if we can.
It's actually a hard field to hire in.
What, excuse me?
Very hard field to hire in.
Yeah, I know, it's like everybody else, just can't find enough people, right, so we're trying to get them in early, get them in, you know, get them interested, and it seems to be working. That's basically all I have for you this evening.
Yeah, Mary asked my question.
I have a question, so, and I think, I know the water was tested at various houses, you did your annual testing this summer?
Right.
I know my house is one, and it came back fine, did any houses come back showing contaminants from your testing?
So, everything was well below the limits, only one house, and I don't remember, Tommy had had a very small lead hit, overall, your corrosion control program that you've been using since 1982, and give credit to your engineers, is very good, so that's why you're in the position you are as far as lead and copper goes, it's the pH out there, it's the alkalinity out there, that keeps the lead and copper from leaching into your water.
So, with this one house, what does the town do to...
We notify them the results, but it was so far under the limit that there's no, there's nothing...
Oh, that was still under the limit, but it was detected.
Yeah, way under the limit, I mean, barely had it detect, but that was the only one out of 20 sites, and no hits at the schools, including early daycare.
All right, anything else for Shane?
No, I'll probably reach out individually, because with my warm water, when I first turn it on, and the whole part of my house, the bathroom, it smells a little bit like rotten egg when it first...
Did you say your warm water?
Yes.
Then that means your hot water heater needs to be flushed.
Yeah.
But I don't have that...
I get that complaint all the time.
I don't have that in any of the other...
Mary, you could call Shane.
I don't have that, and I still want to...
It's a frequent question, I get it all the time.
I still want it to be tested, because it's five, and we have a bathroom, and in the kitchen, and that, there's only one.
So, what I would recommend is flush the hot water heater and see if the smell goes away, 99% of the time, I tell her us now, and I never hear from her again.
Okay.
All right, so, moving on.
All right, Shane, I think we have that.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hi, Heather, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
So, you have three of my monthly reports, I'd say if there's any questions, we'll start with that, but I do want to get into what Shane was alluding to, which is our lead service line inventory, and I want to use this as kind of a public forum to start talking about this to everybody, because what he was talking about with the letters that are going to go out to about 1,100 customers, but I can give you some more, but, so let's start with the monthly reports, basically, everything has pretty much been status quo, yes, it hasn't rained, but it has given us a chance to actually catch up on a lot of projects.
The one that's happy without the rain, sort of...
Well, not necessarily, not totally long-term, we want it back, too, but, you know, such as, you know, we've got all our line painting done pretty efficiently, we actually have been, on the MS4 standpoint, we've actually gone out and done some street sweeping, again, this fall, because we had gotten caught up, it's not been every day, but we've gotten some of our MS4 roads reswept, which is great, you know, we've gotten caught up on the leaves coming down, actually, and pretty much got all that cleaned up, takes multiple times that we do every, all the properties, you'll see that, so, you know, that was, that's the good news, is because we're not responding to washouts or any other things, we haven't had, over the last couple of months, those problems, we finally caught up on those areas to do, from a labor standpoint. So, if any of you have questions, or if not, I'll go right into the line.
Yeah, go right into the line.
I do want to thank Heather's team for their work today, and in the future tomorrow, on the elections, they do all the moving of the equipment over to the host, they make this all possible, to make it more efficient for the public, so, a thank you to Heather and her team for this.
Appreciate it.
I just also, I know you're doing the leaf removal, and I just wanted to say that the public, and you're doing a great job, but the public access road to the water tower is, I mean, did a great job making it drivable again, but it's full of leaves, that also needs to be...
To the church?
Yes.
Okay, as long as it's not your house.
No, it leads to the water tower, it's the only one that has all that, our other water tower roads are... Thank you.
So, what I'm giving you is a draft copy of the letter that will be going out to the residents to, so, let me back up, what we had to do is we had to do what was called a lead service line inventory, and we've been working on this with a consultant over the last couple of months, the consultant was provided by a grant, and what they did is they went back through records that we provided them, as-built plans of waterline installations, they went by dates of houses, they went by, they took all the information together of all of our service customers, and they were able to classify them into three different classifications, basically, that we had information that said there was no lead, like, we knew there were copper lines, whether it would have been, like, one more of recent subdivisions where we knew what the materials were, or because of work we had done previously, we knew what the materials were, from both a public and a private side, so the public side is up to the curb stop, and the private side is from the curb stop into the house, so we have to classify each one of those locations of what the material is, so a classification of unknown but not lead is okay, as long as we have justification of knowing what it is, unknown possibly lead is meaning we just don't know yet, the good news is so far, we have not found any lead surfaces in any of our records, which is consistent with the historical knowledge, both of Shane and past operators of the plant, and talking to people in the past, it's not, we don't have a lot of lead in our system, if we find any, it will be very rare, but, we have to provide, under the EPA rules, notification to everybody, so this is if it's unknown, so it's very possible that their services are not lead, more highly likely, they're not lead, but this letter, when you read it, it's very scary, it tells you all the bad things, and it's meant to scare people a little bit, it really is, it's meant to get the people willing to allow us to come into their houses to do these inspections, or do the inspections themselves, so there is, in this letter, Shane's phone number to be allowed to come and inspect, also, there is a website that DEP has set up, that you basically can scan that little triangle, you know, square code, it will bring you right to the website, and it talks you through how to do the inspection yourself on your own system coming into your house, so that gives the, that one side of it where you can see what the private line coming into the house is, so those, we have about 1,100 letters that are going to go out, they're supposed to be out before November 16th, so have a little bit of an effort to do, and, but I wanted to start getting the information out, there is already information on our website, if you go under lead service line inventory, you can look up your address, and you can see what the status of your own house is, all right, on the website already, that was required to be posted in October, so that part is all posted, also, there is information about how you can report, the link to report, or have us come out and do an inspection, so people can start calling as soon as tomorrow, set up inspections, where we can go in, we can do the survey, they don't even have to do it themselves, we can fill out the paperwork, and we'll know at least on their side, their public side, I mean, their private side, what it is. To determine what's on our side, which is the side that's going under the road, we have to prioritize what, you know, we have different priorities, so that, actually, there's a matrix that was done as part of that plan, and it prioritizes things like daycares, and school systems, and things of that nature, senior centers, which we know that our new senior center is piped, we're going to know that, so that's the good news, we don't have to, but anything where there's a lot of people that come together, elderly, or children, or, you know, any, any sensitive community, right, so they're looking at high-risk people, so we want to do apartment complexes next, and kind of eliminate those, and then we can actually, once we start, like, if we went into an old subdivision, because most of the new ones we know are there, don't for dates, and we did, if there's 100 houses that were all done at the same time, and we did 10 of them, and all of them were the same, then you can use some logic that says all the rest of them are to be the same also.
Let me stop you there, though.
Yep.
So, the, just, so we're catching up, and just, before we talk about what we're going to do, and how we're going to, so people understand it, and so, that I understand it, the, the, what we're requesting is, is that people inspect, as to the extent that they can, or have the town come in and look at whatever their actual hookup is in the house, and see whether or not it is lead, and then, there's some, and then, there is some work to do, once we're under the road, and we need to figure it out, a lot of this, and this is not dissimilar from what Shane mentioned, and so people at home understand this, a lot of this water is already treated to make sure lead does not leach into the, to the...
Our drinking water, yeah.
Along with other heavy metals, and that the people are worried, and a lot of this is what happened in Flint, Michigan, was the, they stopped treating with those chemicals by switching up the water supplier, when they were getting it, I think, from Detroit, and then got it somewhere more locally, and as a consequence, that's why that community had such tremendous lead leachate, so, all of this is, even though you should take this very seriously, it's a positive engagement, it is not necessarily a negative one, we just have to take lead seriously. Is that all fair, Heather?
That is tremendously fair and exactly accurate, so, yes, we have more work to do, so, I encourage people to go out and look, and be as proactive on their, eliminating the side inside their house, their own side, right before your meter, that is where they want you to look, it is explained, if you walk through the DEP process, there's information on it, if it's plastic, basically, if it's copper or plastic, you're good.
And don't need any paint chips.
So, your, 1,100 customers are getting this, the town is wanting to and willing to go in and look at the service line, how long, like, what, how long is that kind of appointment?
Five minutes, 10 minutes.
So, you literally just look at where the water's coming in and determine if it's copper, lead, or something else?
Correct. Galvan, most of them would be plastic, or an HDPE, copper, which is going to be copper color, that penny, color of penny, basically, the ones you're going to be concerned on, if they're galvanized, or if they look like a silver, and if any silver color being galvanized or lead, would give you more of a silvery pipe. All right, so that's basically what they're, more to come, we have a lot more work to do, I do, the only other thing I really want to mention, because we ruined that season, and our MS4, I started talking a little bit how we have swept, but, leaf cleanup at individual houses, people don't think about it, because leaves are very natural, and so everybody's like, oh, just blow my leaves into a ditch, that's actually very unhealthy for the ecosystem, for our rivers, for our streams, plus, it causes us a lot of problems if the leaves are blown into the drainage ditches in the drainage paths, especially if it's an open system, it clogs the systems, it does tremendous things, not, you know, from an operational standpoint, it's not good for the stormwater system, and also, from the health of the environment, it is not good for the stormwater, or our lakes and our rivers, so I really ask people to please be conscious of not blowing them into the streets, because that just goes into our drainage, and also, not blowing them into the drainage ditches around your houses, or in back of your houses, or even into your wetlands, now, leaves can also be very beneficial, if you use them in the correct way, where you're composting them, or grinding them up, and putting them on your lawn before the winter, so, think about composting or other methods, and if you don't have a way to do that, the town does have availability to, you can bring your leaves down to the recycle center, and there is an area that, for leaf composting, and small branches and things that you can dispose of down there, so I encourage people, if they really don't have a way to get rid of them, that that's the best method, and I think that's probably my two major points tonight.
Perfect. All right, so, thanks, Heather, have a good night, all right, Fire Department, Chief, you're...
After his report, can we do the next to these guys?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get them, yes, I don't want to hang around.
Good evening.
Hi, Chief, how are you?
Doing all right. So, you have my reports for September and October, any questions on either of those two months? It's kind of already been alluded to, but we are in a severe drought, if anybody out there doesn't know that, red flag warnings are up just about every day, we've spent the last two weekends helping neighboring communities, two weekends ago, we were in Holden, Friday and Saturday, and then Sunday, Saturday and Sunday in Brimfield, this past weekend, we were in Spencer and Munson, it's outrageously dry, and the littlest of spark will take off, and the problem that we're seeing, the big problem we're seeing is, the fires burn subterranean, so, the ground is not solid mass, there's air within the ground, and there are air pockets, so, the smoldering embers find their way and travel, and that's the hardest part, because we can't see it, so we may think we have a fire knocked down or put out, and then, you know, a short time later, it pops up somewhere else, just to remind everybody, open burning in the Commonwealth is January 15th to May 1st, but at no time is it permissible to burn leaves, stumps, grass, hay, tires, trash, construction debris, furniture, it's really limited to brush during that permissible time period, so I would ask that that be observed, we are in the process of doing our annual inspections for licensure for the establishments that require licensing, the inspector and the building inspector have been working diligently to get those inspections accomplished, so we can get those certificates printed up and signed, and to the board, so that they can issue those licenses, I think that's about it for my reports.
I don't think I had anything, Mary?
No, no questions.
Chase, Mary?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, so I think with that, though, unless you had anything else, Chief, I would just go into the fire captain piece, just so we can get your guys out of here.
And then, one after that, fire call.
Okay, good thing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The, just for clarification, on the captain job description, this was cleanup, so we held a personnel committee meeting, I asked all the departments if they had anything that needed to go in front of the personnel committee, whether it's new stuff or cleanup stuff, for clarification, this position has been on the books, just not budgeted, we are not planning on budgeting it next year, so this is just cleanup language.
Yeah, exactly, it was the last job description that hadn't been put on the format.
Well outdated job description.
And updated, so...
We retain the position, but it has not been funded.
Okay.
Personnel did review this, made some minor...
There was a couple of grammatical edits.
...errors, and they approved it as amended.
Okay. Questions around the board?
No stuff that would change.
Chase, Mary? Okay. I'm assuming you guys are here on the next one?
The next one, yeah.
All right, so, the, okay, do we have a motion to approve the draft description?
So moved.
Yeah, second.
All those in favor? Great, yeah, I just have it, all right, and then, moving to consideration and possible action on establishment and reorganization of part-time and call firefighters, what's going on here, Chief?
Yeah, so this is, the union and I have been working together to try and find ways to supplement the workforce that really have a minimal impact on the budget, with the success of the Tantascua program that we've seen this past year, and what we're anticipating for the future, we were hoping to be able to reestablish some call firefighter positions, so that, let me back up one step, pretty much every month when I come and speak to you, I tell you how much we're going to the city with our ambulance, and how much time, we're not here to protect the town, but in addition to that, when we do have a big incident, we are finding that we need more help getting multiple pieces of apparatus out of the building, so we're hoping that by adding four new positions as call firefighters only, they would not be scheduled to work shifts, they would not be required to have EMS certification, they would strictly be firefighters who are trained as firefighters to help us at fire scenes... So, we're hoping that by adding, um, four new positions as call firefighters only, they would not be, uh, scheduled to work shifts, uh, they would not be required to have EMS certification, they would strictly be firefighters who are trained as firefighters to help us at fire scenes and help us get apparatus to those scenes. Um, the union and I got together, we kind of conceived of this, this plan together, and, um, w- we think that for the time being, um, this will be kind of a, a finger in the dyke, so to speak, to help us until we can get to a, a financial standpoint, the town can get to a financial standpoint where we can add more full-time staff.
So, if I could jump in, I put a little memo together for you, there's sort of two components, we currently have part-time firefighters. Those people currently are required to have firefighter certification and some form of medic certification. This allows for four firefighter only, they don't have to be medics, so these kids coming out of Tantascwa, for example, who are working toward medics, or we have one who's a part-timer right now who doesn't want to be a medic, who just wants to be firefighter only, they're the people who can drive the equipment, they can drive to a scene if the rescue's tied up with the paramedics. So, there is a role for the firefighter only. In addition on this document, you'll see that we want to also add on the part-time side, a non-firefighter, medic-only option, which means that, let's say, somebody works for a private ambulance, or somebody's a retired firefighter, they don't want to be crawling into a building during a building fire, but they still want the opportunity to have shifts to cover medical emergencies. They could also do that. So, it doesn't change that we have four part-time positions still, it just opens the door for somebody who might not be firefighter but medic-trained, to apply for those. And we add these four positions that are only paid as needed, total cost we figured to train if we filled four of them, about $9,500?
Yeah, less than $10,000.
Yep, so that's a very minimal cost to get those staffed.
And most money coming from-
That will come this year, that if we do it this year, it comes right out of your training budget?
Yes.
We have money in the training budget, next year, if it's not all fill and we still have a couple openings, we'll probably always budget some if there's some turnover, it's about less than 2,500, about, just under 2,500 of, of position.
A person, and, and the plan will be to reduce my overtime request by that-
By that equivalent amount, because it will help. But I do want to be clear, and this is something, anything important to labor, um, and this was done, we had a really very productive meeting, I'd say, what, a couple weeks ago?
Mm-hmm.
A couple hour meeting on this, and, yeah, we had a few meetings on this. Um, we did say that when we agreed to this contract, which was very fair with some considerably reduced, uh, wage adjustments compared to what other communities are doing, I think we had a, a 275, a 175, and a 2 or 2.5, that we would potentially look at the end of that contract at hiring another firefighter, because comparably, we are on the low side. This does not supplant that, I think that, that we did agree when we brought this forward, as the chief said, this is to just put a hole in things, and to be able to supplement without killing the overtime budget, and just to offer more people opportunities to grow into the position on the fireside. So, I, I just want to be clear that, so that there's no misrepresentation, and I think the chief alluded to it, and I, I think it's important that that is on the record.
Questions?
So, I just had one, so there are four call-only firefighters, not EMS-trained, but are we also doing one call medic?
We still have the four part-timers, who would be medic and fire, or just medic?
Yeah, but we already have that.
We only have a few-
Yeah, those, those positions have already-
We're just adding an opportunity into that, that if you don't have firefighter and you're medic only, you could be eligible.
Oh, okay.
That's all, we're just broadening the pool of people who-
Do they ever have call-only medics?
That's what we're, that's what we're asking, that's what we're asking for now.
We're offering that option.
We're offering that option.
Yeah, we currently don't offer that.
We, correct, okay.
Anything else for you guys?
I have nothing, no.
Jim, you want to say anything?
I'm just, you know, I appreciate the chief working with us on this, I appreciate the T A, and I appreciate you guys, um, considering, you know, the polls in front of you. Um, I can't stress enough, and this is a big concern of ours, right, you know, not to supplement time, um, people, because we still do have a lot of mutual aid that Sturbridge relies on. So, this is one way that we're figuring out a way to work with, in the means of the budget at this present moment, and still be able to service the, the town, uh, Sturbridge. And like I said, it took a lot of conversations, you know, the, the T A, um, was, was great in several meetings, and, you know, we all feel that this is a, a good solution, um, for the time, and, you know, we'll continue to work to, uh, improve that as, as we move forward.
Great, all right, thanks Jim, we appreciate it. Thanks, guys, we appreciate it. But the, um, all right, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we bring the request to establish full firefighter-only call positions and open the pool of part-time, still to remain at full positions, to medic status only applicants in a, it doesn't make sense.
In addition to-
Current status.
Yeah.
Just sounds awkward.
Yeah, I think it's just awkward, I think it's right. Um, all right, I'll second. Do we, uh, all those in favor? Great. All right, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Have a good night, guys, God bless.
Yeah, be safe.
Our union president, uh, thank you, and now the church firefighters, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thanks, always.
All right, we are rocking and rolling here. All right, so town administrator, bi-weekly update.
I have none, everything sort of fell into his stuff, there was enough other stuff that he's been prattling on.
Okay, then I move on to action items. Uh, action item A, consideration and possible action, authorize the chair to execute the contract with J J S Universal Construction Company for $17,773 for the 60 Cedar Street Pavilion and bathhouse roof replacement.
So, this was, uh, approved by ARPA for about 24 and change, it came in a little bit under, so this is just the signing of the contract, it's about, uh, 6,000 less than we anticipated. So, that money will just revert back to the ARPA fund for the allocation.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
Do we have any motion?
So moved.
Give a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, ayes have it. Um, consideration and possible action on D P W surplus vehicle auction to our disposal is requested. It's just, just that?
Yeah.
Um, any, do you have any questions from the board?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, for approval to declare the following equipment as surplus and allowing for either the auctioning or disposal as requested, requested for the following.
As listed?
As listed in the memo. Eight items.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Um, moving on to consideration and possible action to accept the donation from Lenny Petrilo, Petrilo of Hearthstone Market of 100 place settings in silverware worth approximately $4,000 for, uh, food service use at the senior center.
Thank you. That is a huge, very, very generous-
We're getting a note together, yeah.
Yeah, very generous.
Very generous.
Yeah, but Lenny's always-
Yeah.
Very generous. With the seniors and anybody else.
Yep.
Um, all right, do we have a motion then?
Motion to accept the generous donation from Lenny Petrilo of the Hearthstone Market of 100 place settings in silverware worth approximately $4,000. This would be used for our food service at the senior center.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, the ayes have it. Uh, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the agreement with Siska Hennessy for elevator consulting engineering services for the Joshua Hyde Public Library.
So, as you know, we've had issues with the, the library elevator, it broke down, we did an emergency procurement for a short-term, if you will, fix, a $24,000 short-term fix. Uh, this particular woman, uh, instead of having Otis tell us what we need on our elevators, since they're the ones who have the contract, we felt it was more appropriate to have an outside analysis done of this elevator, uh, to determine what type of upgrade it needs. It is past its lifespan, uh, a full upgrade may be up to $250,000 to do any kind of mod, if they call it a mod upgrade, to modernize the systems to work properly, but we would like an outside consultant to take a look to advise what the best course of action on this elevator is. It seems a prudent use of money, the funds will come out of my, um, special account for services fund.
Any questions?
And the elevator will be reworked on Wednesday, I believe.
Okay.
Should be back in service.
Okay, um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to execute the agreement with Siska Hennessy for elevator consulting engineering services for the Joshua Hyde Public Library.
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract for the design services related to sidewalks along the Sturbridge Rec area on Cedar Street, funded through ARPA.
So, this, um, had, ARPA had budgeted a certain amount of money, it came in about $17,000 more, ARPA then voted to increase the amount allocated to this to cover the cost of this contract.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to execute the contract for design services related to sidewalks along the Sturbridge Recreation Area on Cedar Street, funded through ARPA.
Give a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, the ayes have it. All right, consideration, I'll go on action item H, consideration and possible action, authorize the chair to execute the engineering services contract with V H B for the design of access to Streeter Beach, funded through ARPA.
So, this was, uh, discussion on how we're going to get to the water, if we can make this work. Um, Heather had gone out to bid for this as well as the Cedar, uh, we had the bid number in hand when we went to ARPA, ARPA fully supported the funding of this contract.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board?
So, I make a motion that we authorize chair to execute engineering service contract with V H B for the design of access to Streeter Beach fun, Streeter Beach funded through ARPA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, all right, moving on to action item I, consideration and possible action on the approval of a grade-one assignment and amended job description of the food service coordinator.
So, I and J are just some restructuring that Leslie's doing as the expansion of some of the programming at the new senior center. Um, this food service coordinator would be paid, it would be an expansion of our budget when we fill this, however, the other position in there is going to take over the formula grant money that would have gone to this. So, there will be some moderate addition to her budget, but I don't think that's surprising, given the increase in operations over there with the expansion of the, there should be some expansion of programming when we have that kind of a renovation, we do, would expect to see some expansion of programming. Um, the personnel committee supported both of these, I support both of these, and I think that they're, they're both necessary. The second position is actually a joint position to assist in the kitchen, and when not busy in the kitchen, to assist in setting up for programs, moving things around, and assisting overall.
Okay, and this all went through personnel?
Yes, these both went through personnel.
All right, questions from the board?
No.
Chase, Mary, you good?
I'm good.
I'm good, thank you.
Do we have a, a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of a grade-one assignment and amended job description of the food service coordinator.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, uh, so moving to J, uh, consideration and possible action on the approval of the new position of kitchen and program support staff funded through an annual formula grant for the senior center.
So moved.
Yeah, I'll second, all those in favor? Great, all right, and then, uh, consideration and possible action on the approval of the revised job description for the conservation agent and assistant conservation agent.
So, when Lauren came in, um, I asked her to take a look at the job descriptions, and she wanted to, her job description was sort of outdated, we did upgrade that, and in the meantime, um, as you know, that assistant position is relatively new, it had been an admin, it could change to an assistant, um, there were some things that were in there that shouldn't be in there, there were some things she felt that weren't in there that should be in there, and she made those adjustments court, adjustments accordingly, there is no impact to the budget, these are just more to accurately reflect how the department should function.
What's been done.
And how, and how she envisions it should function as well.
Okay, questions from the board?
This, these were both approved by personnel.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Ayes have it. All right, now, approval of the revised job description for the town clerk.
So, this was, um, again, some update and revision, some cleanup language, and just to more accurately reflect, uh, the town clerk's position, approved by the, you see why we've been, I had no other memo for you, we're doing this personnel.
All right, so, um, and this was prepared by Lynn?
Yes.
Um, okay, do we have any questions? Comments? I will make a motion to approve the revised job description for the town clerk.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Oh, this is, uh, M, consideration and possible action on selection of a, a select board member as representative of the housing trust committee. I'm happy to keep doing it, it's up again.
I was just going to say, you're doing it, so.
Nobody told me and said they wanted to take it from you.
Consistency.
It is a little tough with the 4:30 start, so my, my attendance isn't as good as I'd like.
Consistency is good sometimes.
You're lucky, you're lucky you're on the record. But the, uh, no, it's a great, that, well, just as, but a point of up, update, it really, um, and, uh, it, it was, it was a good opportunity for me to just express, you know, how much progress they're making on housing, and, and, you know, and it is a very fraught issue politically in a lot of places, uh, but, and it's, everything gets more and more expensive, but, uh, i- it's a good group, and Gene's really done a nice job marshaling everybody to sort of do a weekend to, uh, ease the housing burden on those that would need in town, so, it's been a good start with a lot of work to do. Um, so that's it, so I guess I'm making a motion to select myself?
Yes, make a motion that we select Jamie as a, uh, board of selectmen representative to the housing trust commishy, committee.
All right, second?
I don't know about that.
All right.
No, you could get it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all those in favor? All right, great. Um, and then, we're going to O, consideration and possible action, execute the contract for this, with V H B for the Cedar Street pedestrian improvement project funded through complete street grant.
So, after the discussion we had last week, it put this back on the radar, uh, we sent the letter applying for the extension, they have indicated no problems about that, I haven't officially gotten the extension, but we're at least going to start on the project. Since Heather had bid out the other portion of Cedar and Streeter with them, at this point, we figured we'd get a better bang for our buck and just have them do, we just extend that look. So, this contract adds to that, is the first step in that process. I will tell you, that process is going to require, if it goes through easements, uh, along all those homes on Cedar, so it's going to be a big process, but at least, it is actually now going to be in motion with this contract, at least to get a sense of it. So, I thank you all for bringing it back onto the radar.
Um, so the extension, is it, like, how many years, or what kind of extension did Master T-
I think a year on the grant, I think it gives us a year on the grant.
Oh, it gives us a year, okay.
Great, and we broke down the dates for them of what we anticipated.
And there's several houses that, well, I can't speak for them, but they're wanting it, so I don't think we'll encounter too much problem, but you never know.
You never know.
You never know, I don't want to repeat my words, but excuse me.
It'll be called because residents are asking.
We'll be calling Brian.
It'll be somebody, yeah.
All right, great, um, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, um, old business, Chase?
I've no.
Uh, Mary?
No, not old.
Mary Dowling?
Mary Nidre, excuse me? Um, that's okay. Um, Michelle, have you gotten in touch with the cable? Committee chair yet, about coming in?
Oh, he was here last night.
Oh, he was here last, yeah.
Yes.
He had a nerve of being here.
We'll give you the-
The basic skinny was that he was, um, going to take the next steps to request relevant information from Charter, he's going to start to organize his team a bit more, notify them of our intent to negotiate, and probably ask for some legal services, uh, just to help him along.
So, that's synopsis.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm a hell of a lawyer, but the, um, all right, so that's, anything else?
No, that was it.
Um, I have nothing old. Uh, Mary Blanchard, anything new?
Nope.
Uh, Mary Dowling?
Yeah, well, this would have been an announcement, but I was a little bit late, I did have a root canal for anybody saying, oh, Mary Dowling's late for the meeting, anyway.
I took note of it.
Thank you. Well, no, I had to hear it from a root canal. That's what I thought, I was like, okay.
Yeah, that gets you points.
In my civic duty. The Sturbridge Home with a Berry 5K is Saturday, November ninth. It's the sixth annual, it's a fundraiser for veterans. We've given it to various places. Last year, we went back to Worcester, but serves Worcester County. This year, we may leave it in Sturbridge if we're able to. But you can run it, you can walk it, a 5K's about, what, three-point-two miles? It starts on the Town Common, and you can still sign up for it. There's signs all over Sturbridge, and it's our sixth annual. Nine o'clock, you can go on the Sturbridge Facebook page if you need more information.
Yep, Michelle just.
So it's a great event, there'll be some services on the common for veterans, various services, we'll have some, you know, snacks for runners, and hopefully, it's not eighty, you know, we used to hope it wasn't too cold, now we're hoping it's not eighty degrees on.
I know. But anyways.
Wednesday morning and eighty tomorrow.
That's it for me.
Oh, I know.
Yes.
Chase?
Nothing from me.
Okay, great, so moving on, correspondence. We received the National Grid Advanced Metering Infrastructure Notice and an email from Michael Donnis regarding fair sewer billing adjustments.
If at some point you want to make that an agenda item, once you review that, please let me know.
Okay. So then, moving to approval of minutes from October seventh, 2024. I didn't see anything myself, I think I've reviewed.
No, I didn't see anything.
Mary Chase, did you guys see anything?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written for October seventh, 2024.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, all right, citizens forum? Just identify who you are.
So my name's Katie Dennis. I wrote down what I'm going to say, so sorry for.
No, it's okay.
I'm a Sturbridge resident who cares very deeply about the accessibility of our built environment. I'm here today to raise awareness and express my concern about the lack of accessibility in the built environment here in Sturbridge, particularly in new and recent construction projects. There have been many things built in my short time here that do not meet the Building Code or civil rights law for accessibility. I would like to ask the town to review this more carefully going forward. Not only is it the law, but it's also our moral obligation as a town to ensure all our residents and visitors can access all of our facilities and places of business. While I understand the town is currently working on updating its ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, that does not mean current and recent projects do not need to comply with the Building Code or civil rights law. I'd like to bring forward one particular project today, and that is the library. Last year, the library underwent a renovation to upgrade the HVAC system and the bathrooms in the basement level. This renovation cost more than thirty percent of the full and fair cash value of the building, which triggered full compliance with 521 CMR, your state accessibility code. As the building stands today, it does not meet the accessibility code. I raised two particular areas of concern before, during, and now after construction. The first is the kitchen in the basement level, which does not meet the current standards for things like the cabinet height, appliances, and knee clearances. The kitchen is used frequently by volunteers and for library programming. The second is the basement-level egress. Currently, there are no accessible means of egress from the basement level where two are required. Both require traversing steep slopes and steps. These doors are also frequently used for library programming and events. In fact, last week, one of these doors was advertised as the accessible route to the basement level while the elevator was out. It is not, in fact, accessible. I'm sharing all of this with you to raise awareness. I'm not doing this out of spite or any bad feelings I have for the town. I really love the town of Sturbridge, and I really care deeply about the community I live in. I want to ensure I raise my children somewhere that values inclusivity. I'm asking Sturbridge to do the bare minimum of what's already required by law and Building Code. It's my understanding that while the town is aware of the violations in the library, there's no current plan to address any of them. I would like the town to please address these issues and any other issues of noncompliance at the library. I would also like to continue to offer to be a free resource for the town. In closing, I really am trying to do what's right, and I'm just trying to work with you and not against you, so please just make this right. Thanks.
Great.
We are in routine contact, Ms. Dennis and I.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Okay, with my other question, can you just repeat the stat that was very well-written? I was trying to take notes.
You're all making me so nervous.
HVAC system, and you said thirty percent, and I lost you.
Yep, so thirty percent of the full and fair cash value of the building, if you spend more than thirty percent of the full and fair cash value, you trigger full compliance with 521 CMR, which is your state accessibility code. It's in chapter.
I knew that, I knew that it triggered, like, a major renovation triggered it. I was actually not aware that the HVAC system actually triggered that.
I'm not sure how that calculation was obtained.
Right.
I mean, but I do know that we did have a sign-off from the prior building official. So I'm not.
No, I know, that's right. This is the first.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the first I'm hearing of it. But, so, I mean, it's the, and also in an old town, right?
Yeah.
It's like, so you deal, these things come up. And no, that's, especially in a facility like the library, I think we can all agree.
And in a little background, Ms. Dennis had approached me way back about another committee, and it was at the time that I was putting together the Disabilities Commission, and we were going to have Ms. Dennis sit on it, but she actually works in the industry, so it's better for her to be in a sort of advisory help the town situation, because she does work in the ADA accessibility industry. So she serves as a resource for us, and she reviewed plans for the senior center, took a look at those, we've adjusted some things accordingly. So we are in contact with Ms. Dennis, and thank her for her help on these things.
Yes. And then my other question was, in the intro, you said there's, I don't want to misquote you, but like, several developments that aren't, do you have other examples other than the library that you're able to share with us?
I do, I have a long list. The only, the major other one that concerns me is 505 Main Street. That's new construction, multifamily.
That's a private.
Private. But signed off by our building inspectors and planning and other boards. All ground-floor units are required to be on an accessible route by 521 CMR and the Fair Housing Act, and they all require stairs. And I don't know how that's happening in 2024.
That's a fair point, I can't argue that. So, no, well, thank you for coming in, thank you for bringing attention to it, because it is, it's not, especially in the town or scale, a lot of, and I understand the legal obligations, but putting aside the legality.
I mean, you can tell by the button on the door, nothing on the back door. Maybe you have issues with work.
Let me keep talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So the, you know, and I, you know, so the budget stuff on this gets real, like, it isn't, like, even this HVAC project, like, it isn't, it was very, very expensive. So it, we, and I don't say that to justify anything, really. It's just more of just like, please just stay within the process, because as we, just, because it is the type of community that wants to keep working on these things, and so thank you for that. With that, I think, I think that's all we have on this, so, do you have anything else first?
I would just add that the library I brought up last October. So, you know, I work with a lot of towns and a lot of different entities in the state, and I realize budgets are real in timing. I'm not asking you to do this tomorrow, but I am saying it is required by law, so I would like you to look into it.
You're in a process of doing the overall update.
I get it, so my point more is that this board.
Yeah.
Has the chief executive what it gets or doesn't get, or if it gets things and then six more months come, go by. It is a, my request is not about deferring liability or legalities. I don't, it's not really, this isn't the form, to be frank, frankly.
Okay.
It's more of just like, you know, if we know something while we're touching a building, when a project's going on, that, and just like you're doing tonight, this is super helpful. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I understand that everybody's busy, and I'm not, but I do appreciate the effort. So thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you all.